Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. We, this is information, okay. Okay, 4.2, introduction of Long Beach Community College District Classified Senate. This is very exciting to hear about the establishment of the Classified Senate. And who's going to introduce? Or is Cece introducing, or?
Trustee Baxter, would you like me to just give a short introduction? I happen to have the history on this.
Oh, I'm happy for you to do it because this is something that has been a dream and a goal, at least for 20 years, I would say.
Wow, wow. Well, let me acknowledge, we have five individuals who are sitting out in the audience today. They were all part of the LEAD Academy except for Jimmy. So Jimmy, we're waiting for your next application. And so as a consequence of their experience in the LEAD Academy, they had the brain, child if you will, to conceive of this idea after learning a few things through the Academy that there is a possibility of creating a Classified Senate. And to their credit, they brought their resources together and as a consequence, pursued the design and development and ultimately what I believe we're going to have here tonight, the implementation of the Classified Senate. So I want to acknowledge Jimmy Flowers. We have Angela Folks, Annie Ingle, Sonia Verdusco, and Cece Sadler, who are all part of this team who have brought this forward tonight. So I'm going to turn this over to Jimmy.
Well, definitely want to acknowledge President Oakley, definitely Acting President Bree Gable, distinguished members of the Board in the college community. Good evening, how's everybody doing? My name is Jimmy Flowers. I've been an employee of Long Beach City College for 30 years. I am currently working in the capacity of athletic equipment technician. I would like to take this time to thank the Board one more time for allowing me the opportunity of introducing the Long Beach City College Classified Development Team. To date, our team consists of five dedicated Long Beach City College professionals, and they are as follows. Annie Ingle, Applications Administrator. Angela Folks, Financial Aid Specialist. Cece Sadler, Educational Technologist. And Sonia Verdusco, Enrollment Specialist. And of course, myself. First, I would like to begin by giving some background on the history of California Community College Classified Senates. It began with the passage of Assembly Bill 1725 in 1988 to guarantee the participation of faculty and staff members to participate in shared governance. Since then, 70 Classified Senates have been developed within 113 community colleges within the state of California, as well as a dynamic statewide organization, 4CS, which is California Community College Classified. 4CS has been instrumental in assisting our Long Beach City College Development Team with reaching our goals. And before I turn things over to Sonia, I would just mention something. I did mention I've been an employee for 30 years and definitely want to acknowledge President Oakley one more time. And there's an old saying, you give someone something, they'll say, "Thanks," but you teach them something, it lasts for a lifetime. And there's been members actually on the Board, you guys have taught me a lot. You guys have inspired me. Thank you. Introduce Sonia.
While Sonia's coming up, I know four of the five of you are alumni. Annie, are you alum? Did you graduate from Long Beach City College? Okay, well, four of the five, and also four of the five have all received scholarships.
That's right. Thank you. I really appreciated that, by the way. So as Rose mentioned, the inspiration to start a Classified Senate really did come from a LEAD Academy session where we learned about shared governance. We saw that a Classified Senate was definitely something that was missing and could make a vital contribution to the campus community. It was after that session that a few of us started looking into creating a Classified Senate. We recruited, excuse me, we recruited a few Classified members to be a part of the development team and started attending some of the local 4CS conferences that were being held in the region. There, we connected with other Classified Senates, started getting a lot of support and guidance from members of 4CS and other Senates in the state. And that's how we started our process. It's been the intention of the development team through every step of the way that we would be transparent and inclusive of other constituent groups on campus, particularly in promoting and explaining the purpose and the process of creating the Senate. With that in mind, we created an informational website and we held a number of different information sessions in the fall semester on both campuses, offering them at different times within the lunch hour to give more people the opportunity to participate. Following the guidance of 4CS, we were also mindful to inform and communicate with other campus constituency groups of our plans to create the Senate so that we could get their feedback and input as well. Much like the LEAD Academy, the Classified Senate helps support an environment of inclusion, empowerment, innovation, and institutional excellence. And so at this favorable time of state funding, the time is ripe for positive change. And so the need for accountability is also ever-present. So for these reasons, a Classified Senate is easily justified. It increases the opportunity for Classified staff to engage in integrated planning decisions, such as implementation of the strategic plan, fulfillment of future accreditation standard reviews, public accountability to our local statewide and national constituents as well. In this way, the Classified Senate helps contribute to the college's charge of assuring effective discussion and planning implementation by improving communication, increasing transparency, and development of trust through timely input of decision-making processes. Therefore, the benefits of a Classified Senate are multiple. Number one, a Classified Senate lends to the campus culture and statewide tradition of shared governance, which is, as you know, unique to the California Community College system. Two, a Classified Senate increases and facilitates classified representation on campus committee. Three, a Classified Senate helps support, promote, and increase professional development opportunities for Classified staff. And a Classified Senate provides another vehicle for sharing and participating in statewide initiatives and policy changes that affect not only the work we do as classified, but the outcomes and results that we produce as the college. Finally, a Classified Senate shows our colleagues in the state that our district is the place where every voice is valued, where transparency is the norm, where we care to grow our own, and where professional development, engagement, and innovation is an ongoing commitment of the college. And I just want to emphasize that how important it was that being a part of the LEAD Academy really gave us the confidence to take initiative and to pursue establishment of the Senate. So, thank you. I'd like to pass it over to Annie.
Hello. It's kind of nice to speak here the first time without that three-minute timer.
We'll put it up for you if you want.
Yeah. No, no. So I want to explain why we think having a Classified Senate, am I on the right page? Yes. Is important to our college. We also want to reaffirm that having a Classified Union is critical to us and all Classified members. That's why California community colleges that have these two bodies for representation, they create a document called a delineation of duties. That's a mutually agreeable document that categorizes the roles and duties of both organizations. We met with the Union E-Board twice during the year to explain our motivations for creating a Senate and to answer questions. We also mailed a sample of a delineation of duties for them to review, and we look forward to working with them to clarify these duties and create a shared document that will minimize confusion and is supportive of both organizations and classified professionals. Okay. So the differences between the Classified Senate and the Union. Classified Senates focus basically on participatory governance. They ensure representation on participatory governance committees, projects, and issues. Now, the Union, they deal with collective bargaining issues, wages, negotiations, benefits, hours of employment, workload terms, and conditions of employment, which all are very dear to all of Classified. Now, for differences in some of the tasks and roles that we are involved in, a Classified Senate, they give additional opportunities to develop leadership within the Classified community. They preserve and advance intercollegiate relationships and involvement, creating a sense of unity, which we really look forward to. They provide a centralized means of communication between all Classified staff and the rest of the college community. That's one of my pet peeves. So I'm really looking forward to putting up a website and trying to share what's important to Classified, to Classified, and everyone else. Now, as far as the Unions, the AFT, we greatly appreciate them negotiating wages, salary schedules, placements, promotions, layoffs, layoff, and reemployment, rights, initial classification and the reclassification that's about to happen right now. They have procedures to be used for the evaluation of Classified employees, and they are responsible for processing grievances and disciplinary action. There are very two distinctive roles between these two organizations. Now, in November, we held a vote with the Classified staff. And we are proud to announce that 244 members out of the 455 permanent, full-time and part-time Classified professionals voted to create a Classified Senate by answering this question. I'm in favor of creating a Classified Senate at Long Beach City College to represent the Classified in matters of shared governance. I agree with the proposed constitution and bylaws. And we have a mission statement and constitution that you guys have in your packet. And it also, all the documents are at that website right now if anybody's interested in looking at any of those. And we want to thank all of the Classified volunteers that helped to get out our vote. It was their enthusiasm and desire for additional opportunities that enabled us to accomplish this together. Now, we understand that incorporating an additional organization into the mix can lead to a change in culture with the college. And, but we truly believe in the concept that the more voices and the more perspectives lead to better decisions and policies. So on behalf of all Classified that are excited to be more engaged with the campus community, we ask for your support in improving the resolution to recognize the Long Beach Community College District Classified Senate. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any question.
Trustee Zia.
I just have a comment. Thank you, Annie. Thank you all. I still can't believe Jimmy's been here for 30 years. You must have started when you were 12. But just, this is, this sounds fantastic. I'm very impressed by the level of work that you all have done and thought you put into it and collaboration. And just want to applaud you. I know you, Annie, I know Angela. I look forward to getting to know the rest of you. But I know how hard you guys work and how dedicated you are to our students and to service. So I look forward to supporting this item.
Like I said, this is a, like, 30-year-old dream. I remember Mary Thorpe bringing it up, and that's a long time ago. So, yeah, congratulations for all your work. Vivian.
Yes, I would like to echo Trustee Zia and Trustee Baxter's congratulations. I went through your presentation last night and I was very impressed. I had mentioned to Cece that the, I was, the level and the quality of the work. I know the effort that it took for you to get 255 votes to ratify that. I commend you, and I'm very proud that so many of our LEAD Academy alumni and current members are involved. I have two questions. How many employees will actually be on the Classified Senate? And how often will you convene? Have you gotten to that?
The employees in the Classified Senate are the same that are in the membership of the Union. So it's the bargaining unit member. Some Classified Senates also have confidential and management, but they're already represented in a management team. So at this point, it's just people who are membership within the Union.
Is, is membership in the Classified Senate, I guess I'm thinking academic senate where it's just a select number of faculty. Are members of the Classified Senate, they have to be members of the Union in order to be on the Classified Senate?
Everybody is a member of a Classified Senate if they're just a Classified staff. And everybody is actually a member of the Union as well, but there can be a little difference if they opt out. But yeah, we're the same actual group.
So there will not be a separate meeting for the Senate as opposed to AFT?
Yeah, we're two separate tasks, two separate goals. And there's, would be Classified Senate meeting, we hope, once a month, probably during lunchtime. And the Classified Union has their own sets of meetings.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? Are you saying that the same people that are on the Union Executive Committee are the same people on the Senate? Are you talking about different people? And I think that's what Trustee Malauulu was asking. So is it like 10 people, 12 people, five people?
Yeah, they're completely different people.
E-Board?
Yeah, the E-Boards are very different.
I mean, not that there's a problem with that, but, okay.
Yeah, there can be a mix of a Senate, but the executive boards of each would be probably their own. I'm still in a sense of development, but yeah, that's how we anticipate.
Trustee Kellogg.
No, just the question because, and I was going to ask the same one about how many members, like academic senators, certain representation, a certain number of people that are in that. And that's why I was curious if you've even, if there's a standardized for Classified Senates to do a certain format, a framework? Or is each college independent and just come up with your own set of guidelines?
Yeah, each college kind of depends on their own constituents and how they want to do it. Usually, there's an executive board or committee. And then they would have senators that also come around. And usually, that's in geographic area. Like maybe two buildings will have one senator so they could communicate with the people within their area. And it's so, right now, we assume to have eight senators and four executive board members.
How many of the 72 districts have Classified Senates? Just curious, I was trying to look at that.
It's 70 out of 113 colleges.
So 70 colleges out of the 113. So in multi-college districts, you can have a Classified Senate at the different colleges. Okay, very interesting. Because my question to that was, what took you 30 years? In fairness, I'm, but, but not to be where you sit there and go, okay, if it was this good and this positive, and why didn't it happen?
Well, let's just say we started last November, working all of our own time and own money, and made this happen because we believed it would help the college. And so we took on a big task. But we're very thankful and grateful of all the help and support we have had from everybody. And it's been actually a very great experience.
Well, as I, I've asked the question about what are the benefits to the college to do this? And if our Classified staff wants to do it, you know, it was up to the Classified staff to give that direction to the Board of Trustees, not vice versa. And so I was just, it was just intriguing to me about, okay, how can this be a benefit? And probably the strongest one I pulled from it, talking to people, is that many times, and this is true in our other constituency groups, is that when you want to have a conversation as a Board with your different college constituency groups, if you're dealing with strictly the labor group, they're talking about wages, things of that nature. And labor negotiations are never easy. So this is another venue, another way of being able to communicate with your college constituency groups and not into those sticky issues like labor negotiations, et cetera. It's now talking about shared governance process and so on. So for me, that, that made a very attractive vehicle for us to be able to utilize. And that's why we just go back to the original question, why didn't this happen earlier? But it doesn't matter, it's here, and we'll get the vote on it. So congratulations.
Trustee Kellogg, could I just answer your question in terms of what took 30 years? I think it speaks to the power of bringing people together and allowing them to engage with each other and the synergy that comes out of that. And I think that's what we saw, and they're shaking their heads. That's what we've seen with the LEAD Academy.
President Baxter, I believe Ms. Folks wanted to say something.
Yes, and I was just going to call on her. Ms. Folks.
Hi. I would like to say what an honor and a pleasure it is to speak right here before the Board of Trustees and Vice Presidents and President Oakley in his absence, what an honor it is to be here. And I just wanted to speak on what dedicated, what dedicated members we have in the Classified Senate. It took a lot of work, it took a lot of meetings, a lot of, like they said, Friday evenings, Monday evenings. Jimmy, who was kind of shy when he first joined our group, he designed this, he thought of this and designed this. It was our flyer, and it's building, bridging the gap. And it means bridging the gap between the district and the Classified employees. We worked hard doing Cece with the website, you know, going outside and creating an individual website to be able to promote it and, you know, educate our staff on it. And also, the Classified Senate, I believe, is going to really have a key role in the strategic plan. We're going to be working on Goals 3, which is build community, and Goals 4, which is invest in people and support structure and transformation. Since we began promoting the Classified Senate, there have been so many different Classified employees that come to us and ask us so many different questions. And I think it's going to be really good for the Union as well because they come to us and they ask us a lot of different questions. And with the delineation of duties, they feel comfortable coming to us. So with the delineation of duties we have, I've been able to, you know, direct them to the Union business, you know, and direct them to the Classified business. Also, I just forgot, you know, my sister had a massive heart attack today, you guys. So I wasn't even supposed to be here, so I don't have a script or anything. But I just want to tell you guys, there is no place that I would rather be than be right here. I waited enough for her to get in stable condition, and I came right here to be here to present with my team right here because they are dedicated. And I just want to show them how much I love you guys and I support you guys. And I'm here for the Classified Senate. And just thank you guys for your time, for investing in us, Rose, you know, caring, for loving us, teaching us about shared governance and how Classified staff can be a part of it. And just everybody, I'm just really thankful to be here. And I just, just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Angela, that's great. And good luck to your sister. Okay, this is an information item, so it does not require a vote. And, yeah, that's later. So next, we're going overview of the procurement process. And do you want to give the introduction?
Turned it off. We have with us tonight Ms. Margie Pedrone, who's our Director of Business Support Services, and Mr. Joe Carroll, who is the Senior Project Manager with the Solis Group, who oversees our pre-qualification process for our vendors as well as our community and student workforce agreement. So I will turn it over to Ms. Pedrone to do the presentation, to start off the presentation on the procurement process.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to do an overview of our procurement process. As Ann Marie mentioned, I'm Margie Pedrone, Director of Business Support Services. So tonight, we'll talk about the objective of the Purchasing Contracts Management Department, applicable codes, our limits, thresholds, alternatives, and exemptions that are available to us, our internal processes, our pre-qualification program as well as our qualification program, an update on the CSWPA, upcoming code changes and trends that we're seeing, and current statistics. So the objective of the Purchasing and Contracts Management Department is to ensure compliant, transparent, and fair procurement process to meet the needs of the college. In order to be compliant, we need to adhere to certain codes. And those applicable codes fall under the Public Contract Code, the Ed Code, the Government Code, and Civil Code. We also have a Handbook of Purchasing Regulations. It's available on our website. And we adhere to the Los Angeles County Office of Education, the Information Bulletin 3870. They act as a secondary audit because they process our payment. So our limits and thresholds. For equipments, materials, supplies, and certain services, anything that we're procuring from $0,000 to $15,000 will procure off a quote. $15,001 up to the bid limit requires three written quotes. The bid limit currently at $87,800 and above would require a formal bid process. I'll get into more of those details in a minute. The bid limit, it adjusts annually. We expect to hear in the next couple weeks what the bid limit will be raised to for the next year. It's based on the Consumer Price Index. For construction services, as you know, we adopted the Cupca limits in October 2012. So those limits and thresholds, anything from $15,000 to $45,000 would require three written quotes. $45,001 up to $175,000 will follow the informal bid process. $175,001 on up will follow the formal bid process. And just as a reminder, all change orders are restricted to 10% of the contract value in that code. So we do have some alternatives or exemptions to the bid process available to us. The piggyback option where we can utilize other public agencies' bids or cooperative agreement. Educational and curriculum materials do not need to be bid. There's provisions for emergency and sole source. And professional services are exempt from bidding requirements. So our internal process works like this. If a department needs a particular item or services, they check their budget for funds, make sure they're available. They submit a requisition. That requisition goes through the accounting department. The account string is verified and made sure that there are funds available. If not, it goes back to the department. If it all checks out, moves forward to purchasing. The buyers will take a look at that. They'll determine which procurement process is required, and they'll start that process, complete it, and a purchase order is issued. Purchase order will be issued to the vendor with a copy back to the requesting department, the account payable office, and the warehouse that the items will be received through the warehouse. Warehouse will receive the goods, if necessary. And if the item is an equipment and it's over $5,000, they'll affix an equipment tag. They'll deliver the items to the department. The department signs off on the invoice, forward it to accounts payable, accounts payable pays then. A little bit more detail about what our process would be. For services, we go through an RFQ/RFP process. So we would receive a contract request form. It'll be submitted with that requisition. The scope will be determined, as long as the selection criteria as well. The RFP, an evaluation form, is developed, it's issued, vendors are notified, it's posted to our website. Sealed proposals are submitted by a deadline and reviewed by an evaluation committee. The selection is made, and if it's less than $175,000, the contract is executed, the notice to proceed is issued, and an item is submitted for board ratification. If the amount is greater than $175,000, the item is submitted for board award. The contract is then executed, and a notice to proceed is issued. So a little bit of the difference between RFQ and RFP. RFQ stands for Request for Qualification. RFP is Request for Proposal. So the intended outcome for an RFQ would be a list of pre-qualified vendors, whereas in RFP, we want essentially one vendor to do the job. The scope will be more general. The scope will be more general in nature, whereas in RFP, we'll have a specific project, milestones, and a development there. Evaluation criteria will be based on qualifications, experience, and a fee schedule for RFQ, but for an RFP, it'll be qualifications, experience, and a total cost. The selection will be done by the requesting department, as they're the subject matter expert, and overseen by our director, Deputy Director of Purchasing and Contract, and the same is for both RFQ and RFP. Award for an RFQ, further competition may be required. As I said before, we're establishing a pre-qualified list. Under the RFP, upon execution, an award of the contract. So, our bid process for equipment, materials, and supplies is pretty much like this. We'll receive the requisition, we'll develop the bid documents, we'll start the bid process, we'll do an advertisement once a week for two weeks, we'll notify vendors, we'll conduct a public bid opening, the bids are received in a sealed envelope, a bid review is done, board award, and the purchase order is issued. Public Works Bid Process is for greater than or equal to forty-five thousand. So, we'll have a project and delivery method established. What is the project, and are we going to do design, bid, build? Are we going to do design, build? That'll be established. The design is done and DSA approval received. We will receive a Public Works Information Sheet that will give us the requirements of the project. What kind of license is required, number of days to complete the project, any specifics like that. We'll develop the bid documents and start the bid process. We will advertise, we'll do a pre-qualification if necessary, conduct a mandatory job walk, and allow for pre-bid inquiries. Field bids are received and a public bid opening is conducted. The bid review takes place. We make sure that the bid is responsive and that the bidder is responsible. Notice of intent is issued, naming the lowest responsible bidder. If it's greater than, I mean, I'm sorry, if it's less than one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we'll...